As we open our 11th meeting of City Council, let me say that the City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519661 2489 extension 2425. I will call for any disclosures of community interest. Seeing under recognitions, we have two. First, I would like to call on councillor Anna Hopkins on a very poignant moment that impacts London and the world. Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship, for allowing me to do this. Jean Vanier passed away today at the age of 90. He was a Canadian philosopher, theologian, and humanitarian. He was the son of a Canadian diplomat. Here in London, we have named an elementary school after him, as well as a research centre at King's College. He believed in community. In 1964, he founded LARSH International. LARSH is an alternative living environment where those with development disabilities could be full-fledged participants in the community instead of patients. Here in London, we have three homes. We also have the gathering place in Lambeth, which provides meaningful and engaging participation for a growing number of people. LARSH London is a community within the London community, working with others to build a world where everyone belongs. As a councillor, we have many challenges. From time to time, I often wonder, what does community mean? I'd like to read a few words that I've taken off the bulletin board in my office that helps me remember what community means. And this is what was written by Jean Vanier in 1979, "Community and Growth." It is always good for individuals, communities, and indeed nations to remember that their present situation is a result of a thousand of gestures of love that came before. This obliges us to remember that the community of tomorrow is being born of our fidelity to the present. We discover that we are, at the same time, insignificant and very important because each of our actions is preparing the humanity of tomorrow. It is a tiny contribution to the huge and glorious final humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hopkins. Out of respect for Jean Vanier, that great humanitarian, could I ask you to stand for a moment of silence, please? Colleagues, there is one final recognition that we would like to give tonight, and it's a special recognition that is acknowledged as we have several guests in the public gallery. From St John Ambulance, we have Randy Ward, Executive Director; Board Director Don Denny; MFR Chief, which is Medical First Responders Chief Ben Rees; and Megan Weiderman. Now, over the weekend, members of St John Ambulance London Medical First Responders Team celebrated 110 years of service within our city. That's an incredible achievement, one deserving of both our appreciation and our admiration. As a personal bias, I am the branch patron and a commander in the Order of St John, and it's an organisation for which I have immense respect, and an organisation that all Londoners are grateful to have in our community. The Medical First Responders Team in London is made up of approximately 100 individuals, all of them volunteers, all of whom give of their time, most often evenings and weekends, and always in the service of others. They provide first aid and medical response at more than 250 events in our community every single year, which shows how they are so well-known, and they are the very best at what they do. They prove this in their countless interactions with the public, but they also prove it against their peers, actually most notably at the annual Ontario Medical First Response Competition, where first responders from across the province compete against each other to test their skills in a series of various casualty scenarios. How appropriate that this is an emergency preparedness week as we have this discussion. Our medical first responders from London routinely win gold, and I believe they're going to do it again in a few weeks when they compete in Toronto at the 2019 event. The Medical First Responders Team's success and presence in our community is an enduring testament to a name you will also all know, the late Peter Harding, former deputy fire chief in London, who also served with St John Ambulance for over 40 years, the last 18 years as superintendent for London Middlesex and eventually provincial superintendent. Peter was many things, a perfectionist, compassionate, and somebody you could depend on. And those same words, colleagues, could be used to describe St John Ambulance Medical First Aid Responders, First Responders. And while they don't do it for recognition, surely once in every 110 years feels appropriate to me. Congratulations to St John Ambulance Medical First Responders on this remarkable achievement. Thank you for your service, and thank you for caring for Londoners. I am not aware, colleagues, of any confidential matters to be considered in public. However, I will look for a motion to go into closed session and look for that motion. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Helmer, councillor Kayabaga, I will turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Councillor Cassidy? Councillor Sun?
Yeah?
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues. Can we please move to Committee Room 3? Colleagues, we have the minutes of the meeting held on April 23rd. As we put that on the floor, we'll look for a mover, please. Councillor van Meurwegen, a secondaire. Councillor Lewis. Any comments or questions? Then let's turn your attention to the screen as we call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Thanks very much. Under communications and petitions, please note, colleagues, there's an added petition on the agenda, and I need to look for a motion to receive that added communication. Thus, we could then refer it to be considered in the appropriate report. Is there a mover? Councillor van Hoel, seconded by councillor Lewis. Counselor Van Holst seconded by Counselor Lewis, thank you. Any discussion? Then we'll call the question as I turn your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 to one.
Colleagues, there are no motions to which notice is given, so as I turn your attention to the reports, we will move to Counselor Morgan to present the 11th report of the Corporate Services Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm happy to present the 11th report of the Corporate Services Committee. We have five items to report to you today. I know that item five, which is 4.1 on the committee agenda, which is a full-time counselor for next-term council, I have a colleague who wants to deal with that one separately. Otherwise, I don't know about any others that colleagues would like pulled. I'd certainly be happy to do that. Otherwise, I'll put one through four on the floor for consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any of the items one through four to be dealt with separately? Seeing none, this will then be by consent, so I will turn your attention to the screen. Oh, I would thank you. Counselor Morgan, please.
Yeah, I do want to make a comment on one item in the consent agenda, and that is the 2019 tax policy. It should be no surprise, I'm going to take the opportunity to talk about tax policy. I just want council and colleagues to be aware that what the committee has recommended is a tax policy that will take advantage of changes in the education tax rate, will balance out some shifts in NPAC assessments between the different tax classes, and will lead to a residential tax rate after education taxes of 1.2 percent, multi-residential of 1.3, commercial will be 4.5, although that's down from the contemplated six, and that's because we lowered the corporate tax ratio by a point. And this seems to be the option that the committee felt balanced all of the needs of all the different tax classes and was fair in the short and medium term across tax classes. So just wanted to highlight that these are the rates that when the tax bills are sent out that are in the tax bill. So despite the fact that we debate a budgeted tax increase number, that is the amount that the municipal budget increases, that is not necessarily the amount that each of the different taxpayers or tax classes face, these are the numbers that they face. So I'm happy to support this. I hope everybody else supports it.
Any other comments with respect to items one through four? Seeing none, I will now turn your attention to the screen, please, as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes, the remaining item was related to a communication from Counselor Van Holst. The committee decided in majority, although it was a divided vote, to receive the information, and I anticipate that the council will want to discuss that again, and I look forward to the discussion.
Any discussion, colleagues? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. There's a best practice for governing cities our size, and I would suggest that either all our comparator cities have moved to that best practice and we've yet to step up to that plate, or perhaps they've, they're all in sort of the wrong position and should come back to where we are. Just out of humility, I think we should have a discussion about where that is. So we covered some ground in the committee meeting, and I appreciate the committee for their comments. We did establish through kind of consensus that this is in fact a job that requires full-time hours, which is one of the questions I had put forward. I'd asked a couple of those questions. And so that begs the question, then, would we be better off if our full-time council was actually holding regular daytime hours, regular office hours, like other MPs and other organizations and our comparator municipalities? I personally believe that we'd be doing a much better job of driving change if we were in that position, because there's many efficiencies that would be there. If you look at the communication I sent on the back page of your agenda, I listed a dozen of those efficiencies. And so this seems certainly worthy of, at very least, a discussion. I know some people suggested maybe this was bad timing for a discussion. I can apologize for that. However, this actually was supposed to come to us earlier, but there was a bit of mix-up with the clerks and interpretation of it. This, it was suggested that we'd already discussed this, but this discussion that I'm asking for is for the next council. And we should look at this as soon as possible, because it takes a long time to clear these things up. So my goal is simply to put this into the Governance Working Group, so they can have a discussion, come back to SPPC with a recommendation, and at that point, we can give staff some clear direction to some of the other things that we're already going to have them do. And you'll see on the back page, some of those things are a compensation review and a boundary review. So since this idea of having daytime hours might also give us the opportunity for smaller council, a fewer number of counselors, we should make that decision as well, and then we can instruct staff to do a boundary review for whatever number of counselors we think's most appropriate, and the either daytime hours or not. So that's going to be quite a bit of work. It's going to take quite a bit of time, and we need to get this done well before the next election happens. So I think we need to start this soon, or at least get it in the work plan. So for that reason, I've put together a different motion this time, and this one is just say that the Governance Working Group be tasked to discuss the virtues of a daytime council for the next term and provide a recommendation for further discussion at SPPC. So I believe I may have a second there for that motion.
Is there a second there? Counselor Lewis. Before we carry on with that, a point of clarification, often staff do not have an opportunity when comments are made to present their own perspective on it, but I've been assured by the clerks that if there were any issues with respect to delay of this coming forward earlier, the confusion was not with the clerks, and they wanted me to make a point of saying that. And I want to make a point of saying that, because we don't want to have any misunderstandings in terms of those relationships. So that is their perspective. So with that, we will establish a speaking list to this amendment, and I have Counselor Morgan either for a clarification or a comment.
Yes, Your Worship. I don't want to enter the debate at this time. Just as committee chair, I just wanted to provide a clarification based on the letter that the council wrote. In it, it says the committee was able to establish by consensus, and I appreciate the word unofficially, that city council is a full-time job. Certainly, you can see in the committee's recommendation, we did nothing formal of the sort. That simply came up during the debate, that discussion, but the committee made no declaration one way or the other. I just wanted to clarify that for council.
Thank you. That is a point of clarification. As chair, on my speaking list, I have Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I can't tell you how tired I am of this navel gazing that's going on. We are continually talking about ourselves. And I just want to assure you, particularly number seven, where it says, "Decision-making law will not be impaired due to counselors being cranky late at night." I just want to promise the council that I can be cranky in the morning, in the afternoon. My wife will tell you that for sure. When this stuff comes up, it offends me to some extent. I'm not a full-time counselor. And I'll tell you why I'm not a full-time counselor. It's not because I'm not dedicated or committed to this job. I think there is a huge value for my, for me to be out in a different community, getting input, talking to them, interacting with them, representing people with disabilities, representing other people. I think that makes me a better counselor. It may not work for other people, but it works for me. I think this whole idea of full-time, part-time counselor is becoming largely irrelevant. For me, the test is, are you doing the job? Are your constituents happy with the job you're doing? Are you providing the level of service to them that they expect? And if that's the case, then they'll reelect you, or they might not reelect you. But I just don't see the, I'm just starting to lose sight of what the goal is here. And all of these things, one through 12, I could stand up here and make an argument that the exact opposite is true. That if the, we had the committee of whole, we would cut the time for approval. You've got to be kidding me. If we had to make every decision with the committee of the whole, we'd be here for days on end with everybody debating a particular point. I think a small committee system making the initial decision is a much more efficient system than having every decision initially with a large group of people. And quite frankly, I don't have to go to every meeting to be a good counselor. So I reject pretty much every assumption. I reject one through 12. I don't think there's anything to indicate they're accurate or are true. I don't know where they came from. So I'd like to just say, I'd like to really carry on doing my job for the next four years, see how my constituents feel about it, and stop doing this stuff, this navel gazing. Look at us. Look at what we are. Look at what we call ourselves. I just, I find it tiresome.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. And as the person who was willing to second this and bring it forward, I want to say to Counselor Squire, I don't disagree with some of the points you've made. I find actually great value in spending Saturday morning with a cup of coffee in my hand at the arena for feedback as much as I do at some PPMs or at meetings here. Frankly, it is good to get out and be involved in the community. On the other hand, I think that we've also heard, and we certainly heard from the Governance Compensation Task Force, if I've got the title wrong, I apologize for that, from the last council's term, that, you know, they weren't mandated to discuss whether or not we were full-time or part-time in terms of their evaluation of what compensation was appropriate. And I think that there are some things in here that also have at least some food-for-thought discussion. So I think a working group is the appropriate place for this to land. We're going to be discussing, we're going to be looking at things like ward boundaries before the next election. There's other items of governance that are coming up, so I don't think it hurts us at a working group level to have that discussion. Where that lands, I don't know, but I'm open to that. And so I'm just going to encourage colleagues to let this get to the working group. And anyone's invited, of course, to come and join the working group and participate in the debate. It'll be part of a more fulsome discussion, and I hope that perhaps an outcome from this will result in us not revisiting this again in three years, four years down the road, the new council, whoever that may be, because it does keep coming up again and again. And I think there's been a lack of willingness to really engage in the discussion. So perhaps it's time to tear the Band-Aid off, have it, and whatever the result is, is what we will all live with moving forward. And I think it is also just one other point. Important to note that this is a discussion about what the next council would look like, not this council. We're not looking at changing the terms of reference for ourselves.
Counselor Ploza.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Counselor Van Holst, for bringing this discussion forward. Unfortunately, we seem to be having a lot of these personal discussions quite compactly. As we moved through our conversation last night about municipal budgets, tax levies, and what we can do, I don't want to get into the discussion of full-time counselor versus part-time for myself. My schedule allows me to be full-time. I recognize other counselors do things on evenings, weekends, they manage their time differently, and they're not full-time counselors. Depending if you are or not, your residents elected you, and it's not my part to say what they picked is or isn't right. That's where I stand on this. But as for the amended motion that Counselor Van Holst brought forward of even having a discussion of daytime council meetings, I am interested in that discussion just from the staff's perspective of what budgetary savings, if any, could be found there based on staff and their evenings with us. And certainly sometimes, we know there are many sitting with us for extended periods of times that we talk, and that's where my interest would be in supporting this.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was thinking of not getting involved in this one, but there's merits on both sides of this debate. I think everybody recognizes that. There's challenges on both sides of this debate as well. I myself have flipped back and forth over the years of watching council before arriving at the horseshoe and during our time here, too. I would say, however, that we've exercised a fair amount of process over the past four years into our fifth now in examining that, especially with the Council Compensation Task Force that was assigned last time. I think we did miss an opportunity by not exploring the terms of work and looking solely at the compensation itself. Prior to arriving here at council, I was fairly involved in the re-establishment of the ward boundaries from seven to 14, and changing from two counselors to one per ward. I think that made a significant difference in the outcome and outputs associated with this council. With that all said, I find myself in a strange position, because I, like Counselor Squire, find myself a little fatigued by the discussion. I think there needs to be a time for this to settle a little bit. Let's, the recommendations from the Council Compensation Task Force came forward and significantly changed remuneration associated with counselors. Let's see what impact that has and where it goes. But unless the recommendation is for wholesale review, and that's not what I'm reading here, it's taking a look at the merits of daytime meetings, and it says the virtues of daytime meetings. There's certainly some negative components to daytime meetings. From a budgetary perspective, there really isn't significant savings associated with that. We heard that from previous reports. There's not a lot to be saved there. I mean, it's really negligible in terms of the context of the whole city budget or from the governance budget components themselves. I could tell you, I mean, I think from an equity perspective, it probably makes a lot more sense that if counselors were dedicated solely to the responsibilities of this horseshoe. I know there's a fairly significant variance in the amount of time that counselors spend here, and we're all compensated the same. And so that's not necessarily fair or just. I know from my perspective that I often don't get the chance or the opportunity to pursue things as far as I wish I could, because I have, there are competing interests. I know that my amount of fight is divided three ways, between here, my job, and at home. And how far do I pursue things to the end? I've got to pick my battles, and I think everybody has to do that. But I really think at this time, I think Counselor Van Holst is right. If we're going to do this, we do this now so we can discuss it for the next term, but I don't think this term is the term to discuss it. And so I'm conflicted by it, but I respectfully not support the motion that's being put forward at this time. One, because I don't think it's addressing the right things, and two, because I'm not sure that this is the time to do it. And back to our discussion about compensation, I don't, this isn't an optics thing, it's a question of just how do we make this thing work? And how do we keep this council moving forward and focused on the right things? So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Your Worship. I hope, given the preamble at the beginning of the letter about the full-time, part-time thing, I hope regardless of how people interpret what took place, I hope that that gets put to bed. I want to stop talking about full-time or part-time. It's a nonstarter. It's impossible to measure, it's impossible to hold anybody accountable. Nobody can be, unless we pass a bylaw, you can't say you must work full-time as a counselor. So let's just get rid of that terminology altogether. I agree with many of the comments on both sides of the argument. At the end of the day, we are accountable to the people that vote for us every four years. We do the job individually the way we feel is the best that we do, that we can. And then after four years, there's another job interview, and people make that judgment based on how they vote. It is not for any individual counselor to tell any other counselor how they should or should not do their job, whether they should or should not hold outside another paying gig in addition to council. And I absolutely agree with counselors that have said the things they do outside of this council chamber council chamber and then bring back here add value to their role as a councillor. I completely agree with that, just as my role as a mother and all the things I've done in past working careers, those all add value to my work here. Do I think that the Governance Working Group could look at the council schedule? I think there's some value in that. I also agree that there's value, as Counselor Turner said, in looking at the entire, the entire package, the size of the council, the ward boundaries, all of those things together. And in fact, I supported a motion that Counselor Hubert put forward, I think I might have been the only one, we might have been the lonely two, that supported the idea of a smaller council. If we're going to save taxpayers' money, that's one way to do it. So I am going to support this motion. I don't like talking about ourselves over and over and over again, and that's why I want to see this moved over to Governance Working Group where they already are tasked with some of these things.
Any other comments or questions, Counselor Van Mierbergen?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, is our system that we're currently employing really that bad? I mean, it's quite functional, it seems to work efficiently. We have the freedom to approach it in the manner we see fit as elected representatives, yet we seem to incessantly be going through this over and over. It seems to be non-stop talk about ourselves, and that was the point I made at committee. And I think we can all agree that in our own way, we're all full-time in reality. The problem, though, is if, once we get into this situation where we get into nomenclature and branding ourselves as full-time, then of course, the next step is the big pay raise. And we've already had the pay raise, and yet here we are, it just, I've got the feeling that when you come right down to it, that's what we're looking for, and that's how it's being perceived in the community. We call ourselves full-time, next thing you know, another big hike in pay. And for that reason, I will not be supporting this.
Other comments or questions, Counselor Helmer?
Thank you. I think unfortunately, we'll probably be talking about switching to daytime meetings until we switch to daytime meetings, and then we'll stop talking about it. I'm not aware of anybody who has gone to daytime meeting schedule and then said, hey, what we really should do is have our meetings start in the evening and gone back to that way. Generally, it's a kind of one-way process. So if you want to stop talking about it, we could just get on with making the change to meeting during the day, and that is what we're talking about. And that's what I said at the council meeting, the committee meeting, I said, you know, I want to just talk about when we should have the meetings because that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about these other things that I think in some people's minds are related. You know, how much should people get paid, and, you know, what do you call the councillors? I mean, that's not what I want to talk about. I just want to talk about when we have the meetings. I think there's a lot of value in having meetings during the day. With the exception of meetings like a public participation meeting where we really need to provide people with an opportunity to finish what they're doing at work so that they can come to participate in those PPMs. But even for the PPMs, which we can keep in the evenings, there's nothing saying we can't have those in the evenings. If we had more opportunities for them, we could spread them out better. And so you wouldn't have the situation of a gallery stacked with people waiting for their item. That wouldn't happen as often because you'd have more opportunities with fewer items in each public participation meeting. So for the members of the public who are coming down to participate in, generally speaking, one issue that's on the agenda, that can simplify their life a lot, you know? So I think there's a lot of value. Right now, we're cramming everything into Monday and Tuesday, right? We do have meetings during the day. In the last term at council, about 30% of all the meetings I went to were before four o'clock. So it's not as though they're not happening, they are happening, it's just a matter of which ones. And does SPPC meet during the day? Does council meet during the day? Basically, every city that is larger than London, their council meets during the day, their committees meet during the day. There are a couple of exceptions, like Hamilton still has council meetings in the evening, but all their committee meetings are during the day. And I think having the public participation meetings to give them more opportunities, we can do that by simplifying the schedule to meet during the day. I do think people are generally speaking fresher and more engaged in the work at nine o'clock in the morning than they are at 10:30 at night. And I've been at a lot of meetings at 10:30 at night, and I've heard people say, we've got to stop because we're not, we're not in a good frame of mind for making decisions. I mean, that does happen, and that's a consequence of starting the meeting at four o'clock. It's also a consequence of how long the meeting takes. And I think having the ability of staff to come in and out of a meeting, so if they're in the building, for example, and they can just come in for the section that they need to be here for, and then they can go back to the rest of their work, that's hard to do during the day because, during the evening, because at the evening, the rest of your colleagues are not around, you know, you can't go back and talk to them. Basically, you have to wait around, wait around, wait around in case you're called on, and there's a lot of inefficiency in that from the staff. So whether it's going to save money or not, it's going to make their lives better, and I think it's going to improve things in terms of how we're making decisions, how much time is going into all those decisions. It is important thing, and I think it's a very simple thing. We can just switch to having more daytime meetings. So I think having a discussion about it is very reasonable, and I'm glad that's what the councillors suggested. I hope people will support it.
Thank you, Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to my colleagues for your comments. I find Counselor Van Holst is very consistent. I know he has been an advocate on being, speaking to council as a full-time job and how we can do a better job is something that he's spoken about throughout the years. I, I'm kind of torn in both directions here because I am getting a little tired about talking about ourselves all the time and how we do our jobs. And obviously, we do our jobs all differently. We have different wards that have different demands upon our time as well. And so how do we go forward? We had a discussion the past four years on how we are to do that. We had the Compensation Task Force look into it. I think that was, that to me was important. It wasn't us looking into how we do our job, it was the community looking into how we are doing our job and how it could be done better. I appreciate some of the comments about, you know, maybe budgetary savings, we looked at that. Boundary changes, I think, are always looked at, given the changes in our population and balancing out, that's still going to continue. I appreciate Deputy Mayor Helmer's comments about daytime meetings and how can we function better and be healthier as a council making important decisions. Maybe daytime is the place to go, but I don't see this motion being about that. I think it really opens the door to other things, and that's why I won't be supporting it. I think that it opens up, again, the compensation for full-time, part-time, and I do believe that that's going to overshadow the conversation on should we or can we have daytime meetings. So I would be prepared at a future time to have that conversation, but this motion does not really reflect, it encompasses everything, and I am getting tired about talking about us all the time and how we work and how we are compensated.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, your worship. My councillor Turner, I hadn't intended to address this, but just feel I have some things to add to Counselor Helmer's discussion about hours, daytime or nighttime. I understand where he's coming from, you are fresher for sure during the day, but this is a part-time job, and some councillors have other work that require daytime hours. And what a daytime schedule would prove challenging is that if it runs overtime. Sure, like if we run overtime to 10:30 or longer, no one likes that, you're not as fresh, I get that. However, I would hate to have another job that I had, you know, a two o'clock appointment that I had to get to, and I thought the meeting would be over by then, and then you would run into conflicts and maybe rush decisions because of that. Regarding full-time, because I do see this as part of a full-time, part-time thing or also a daytime, nighttime thing, you know, the only full-time city I'm familiar with is Toronto. So if we look at Toronto's councillors, they're paid more than twice what we are paid for, but they also look after two to three times the number of constituents. So we would have to probably move to some sort of model like that where the pay would, as Counselor Van Mierbergen said, would be dramatically increased to recognize as a full-time position. And likewise, to keep the budget the same, we would have to take on greater ward areas. That would result in a smaller council. So at the end of the day, we want to serve London the best way we can. And I don't believe having a council of seven or eight or nine people would be effective in that. We're required to come to decisions based on the input of the group, and I believe, you know, 15, once you start getting below 15, the group might become a little too small to reach that effective decision. So those are my thoughts. I'll probably vote against this because of those two reasons.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? Counselor Mark?
Yes, I'll be brief. This is one of those examples of a debate that isn't our greatest because the words on the screen aren't really what we're talking about. I know that they're contained within Counselor Van Holst's letter. What's happening with that particular letter as it's being received, we're not really doing much with it beyond that. The only thing added is to task the Governance Working Group to discuss the virtues of a daytime council for next term, provide recommendations for further discussion at SPPC. In other words, we're not making any decisions on anything. The councillor wants to talk about daytime council meetings during the daytime. I think that's fine. I don't think we're talking about those other things. In fact, the committee was pretty clear that we weren't, we voted not to talk about those other things, and what we did was receive his communication. Now, this is one of those things that when we discussed it at committee that we did see as not happening through another process, that could be discussed in some way. This is the only one that I think people were willing to discuss, and I think what the councillor's done between the committee meeting and the council meeting is picked out the thing that there was actually some traction on that people might consider talking about and left all the other stuff aside. Whether or not in his comments, he's talked about other things, that has probably done a bit of a disservice to the actual motion on the floor because it's dragged some other stuff into it. So I think colleagues have to be careful when they, when they debate that they don't bring in things that might taint their own motion. In this case, I'm still going to support the councillor's motion because I'm not going to talk about those other things. I chair the Governance Working Group, and I'm going to keep it pretty on task with what was assigned to it if council decides to do this. So what I see being tasked is discussing the virtues of daytime council meetings during the day, that sort of thing, and that's what we will stick with if council approves this.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Counselor Ploza.
Thank you, your worship, and just a point of clarity, if we're talking about daytime council meetings, including SPPC or just council council meetings?
I would go back to the mover in terms of intent of this amendment.
Thank you. So this, this means that basically council will hold office hours, so we would expect councillors to be here similar hours to staff, and our meetings would, for the most part, be, is there some problem there? Yeah, so, so, and our meetings would be mostly during the day. And as was pointed out, we'd have meetings, public participation meetings in the evening to make it, to make that, to make those, make it possible for people to come up to that, but largely having, having, having these meetings during the day.
Through the chair, so you mentioned daytime office hours, and then you mentioned the same discussion, council meetings, so it doesn't seem to be what's up there. This seems, in my interpretation, seems to be like daytime council, like meetings in SPPC, but you seem to be actually speaking to councillors being here during the day for full days, and then we just host the meetings while we were here.
Counselor Morgan, can you shed some thought on this?
And I know that I don't, I'm not trying to speak twice, I'm chair of the Governance Working Group. I can tell you what the councillor just suggested is not what I'm going to let the working group talk about, that is not what the motion is. The councillor wants to talk about those things, he should change his motion to talk about daytime office hours because that's not the way that I'm going to interpret it. I don't think that's the way the clerks are going to interpret it. I don't think that's the way that the Governance Working Group is going to discuss it. So if that's what the councillor wants to do, I would suggest adjusting the motion because that's not going to be the approach that I take at the working group, which I chair.
Well, colleagues, it does cause some challenge when, when we receive a report and then an amendment that may not be as clear or perhaps even potentially thought out that comes to the floor, and then we have a round of dialogue around what we think the motion is. And I think in future, what I will do if there's going to be an amendment that is suggested to a motion, it will have absolute clarity so that there is no confusion what it is we're going to be discussing should colleagues have the wish to discuss this because this is, it's silly to go through this and then be at this stage in it and then not be crystal clear as to what the motion is. Can I ask the clerks, do you have any insight that you'd like to add to this before we carry on?
Through Mr. Mayor, exactly to what you spoke to, how Ms. Westlake Power interpreted and how I interpret it were two different things. So I interpret it to mean meetings, and Ms. Westlake Power interpreted mean councillors in their office all day. So I think it needs to be clarified because we're not clear as to what is on the floor.
I really don't want to go through another round of councillors sharing all their thoughts. I think as much as we have a series of opinions, perhaps I can ask the mover just to add some clarity to what the intention was, and we're going to wrap this fairly quickly, but Counselor Van Holst, do you have some clarity around your, the intent of your motion, please?
Yes, certainly. So the, the idea of having our meetings in the daytime was what came up. We're also talking about being like other councillor, other, other cities that are doing this. I think I was making reference to that. But the fact is, what we, what I want to do is for us to figure out what's the best thing for London and what kind of a governance model.
Okay, I'm actually going to tighten up your comments because this becomes the challenge, colleagues, is that when we have a kind of a, with all respect, a rambling approach to, to thoughts that doesn't bring clarity to a motion. So for the sake of all of us, if you have a very precise amendment, I'd be very delighted to hear that, please.
All right, so let's just have this be daytime meetings.
Is there a secondary for that?
With the.
Excuse me, please, go ahead.
Okay. And understood that it's with the exception of public participation meetings in the evenings. So that's.
And a secondary? Counselor Lewis? Counselor Helmer, did you want to bring some clarity to this? You don't? Okay, great. Thank you. So extremely brief, please.
Very brief, your worship. When I said that I would second the original motion, it was my interpretation that we were talking about daytime meetings, so I am comfortable seconding this as it's been amended.
Is there any confusion as to what the amendment is now? Speak now or never vote again, as they say. So this is for the amendment. I'm almost nervous to read it, so I'll let the clerk read it. Just so there's, just so there's absolute clarity that we know the amendment that we're voting on, colleagues. There it is there. Is that correct, Counselor Van Holst, please?
That seems wonderful. Thank you.
And Counselor Lewis agrees. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, seven to eight.
Thank you, which brings us back to Counselor Morgan, the main motion.
I have no, no further points, I'm still happy to move the main motion.
Which is to receive. Any comments with respect to that? I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Counselor Van Hooft? Counselor Lewis?
I'm sorry, I'm not getting it manually.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Counselor Morgan? Thank you very much, Counselor Morgan. I appreciate that. Eighth reporter of the Planning and Environment Committee, Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, your worship. I'd like to put the eighth reporter of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. I have had number seven asked to be pulled. I've heard from no one else to remove other items.
Colleagues, any other items you wish to have removed?
Counselor Ploza?
Counselor Ploza?
Item number six in regards to item 3.2, the application on Scotland Drive.
Thank you.
I understand she would just like to speak to it. So I would just like to remove item number seven and put the rest on the floor.
Anything else to be removed, colleagues? Then with the exception of number seven, before we vote, I think Counselor Ploza wishes to speak to that.
Thank you, your worship and Chair. In regards to the Scotland Drive, I just want, the rest of my colleagues, I spoke to it at committee, but in regards to this batching, concrete asphalt application coming in over in that area, working with staff to find a way forward in regards to their concerns for the truck traffic that's out there. Some roads have four houses on them, some have 100 and we let the trucks go wherever they will. There are some concerns with berms and drainage that the Upper Thames Conservation Authority brought forward. The city also has a holding provision that they put in for, into this application, which I'm glad that the committee, despite the applicant's request to have it removed, has stayed. I'll be following this and it's one of those applications that deal with the MTO and the ministry and looking forward to this process as we find a way forward to keeping residents' concerns in mind.
Colleagues will be voting for items one through nine with the exception of item seven. Unless there are any other comments, we'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Counselor Hopkins?
I would like to put number seven on the floor. This is 3.3, the Victoria Park Secondary Plan. It's the status and update and draft secondary plan on the principles. I, if I could just take a moment and speak to the item, the committee did support the endorsement of the 10 principles moving forward. I just want to let my colleagues know that the staff is undertaking a study at the moment that relates to the secondary plan. And the recommendations is to endorse the, the 10 principles. We had a full public participation meeting, full gallery, received a lot of comments from the community. There were many. This is about the principles that are going to be, I guess, guiding, being broad and flexible. Staff are looking at some kind of guidance and direction moving forward. We will be having a public participation meeting in June to receive the plan and then obviously at the end of the year, the final endorsement of the secondary plan. So I just want to sort of leave these brief comments to my colleagues. I think it's important that, you know, we have a discussion and looking forward to hearing other comments.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Van Hooft?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I had the opportunity to speak with staff quite a bit about these. I think this is, this area is really the crowning jewel of London and I want to, I want this to be the highest and best use possible for this area. And I'm concerned about a couple of them. So I think I'd like to remove principle one and two from these. So I'd like to vote on those separately if that's, if that's possible. The, the idea of opening up views to corridors and creating new connections to Victoria Park, if you look at the plan, that involves a connection with Kent Street, one potentially with Princess Ave, those were connected there, suggested there. If we were to connect Princess Ave to Wellington, then the, we wouldn't be able to build on the, the site where the Centennial Hall was. That was, that was going to be the site of a, previously a performing arts center. And having a road there, I think detracts, essentially bisects a big portion of the developable lands there. And the same thing happens with Kent Street. So I want that not to be part of these principles. I want to make sure that we can, as I said, have the, have the highest and best use for, for this area. So I've made, I've made other comments, but this, this one to me seems, seems like it would have, would benefit a very small number of people and limit the potential development greatly. So I'll, I'll ask that we move, we vote on those of the, of the principles separately.
So colleagues, if you, if I turn your, your attention to page 110, which has the principles one and two, 4.1 and 4.2, the open up the view corridors to Victoria Park and improve and create new connections to Victoria Park. It looks like what we're doing is, if there is an amendment or just a request to deal with these separately, as principles in there, we're just, Counselor Turner, could you bring a little clarity to this?
Thank you, your worship. I'd seek the clerk's advice in this, but I'd consider this to be contrary to the recommendation that's been put forward by the committee. The committee made a recommendation of the principles on the whole. If, if they want to be removed and considered separately, then I think the motion should be defeated and then reconsidered and a new motion put forward. And perhaps if, if Counselor Van Hooft wanted to consider these separately, then he could do so at that time. But the motion on the floor is, is the staff recommendation here.
So we're dancing on the edge of a pin here for just a moment. We're just going to get some clarity from the clerks, get wisdom so that we will, we will provide right counsel. Clerk, your thoughts?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this isn't a clear cut one. If, I don't think there's anything wrong with, with voting on them separately. However, if one or two of them are defeated, then overall it would be contrary because you're not endorsing the whole. So that would be contrary if it loses.
Counselor, do you wish to add to that?
Yeah, if I, if I may, just to add to that, the, the recommendation isn't broken down into an A, B, C, and D. And if those were the circumstances and the recommendation had that, then I would say, yes, we could separate those out and it wouldn't be contrary, as the clerk identified. If any of the items were to fall, then that would be contrary to the recommendation put forward. So I would recommend that it either be voted on in whole and then if it fails, then it'd be put forward in an alternative format.
So to be clear, you're suggesting we vote this on the whole. I'm actually inclined to, to agree with that. Counselor Squire?
It really pains me to say this, but Counselor Turner's right, I believe. I'm joking. I, it was approved in whole and I think if you start removing parts, even one part, it's contrary. It's different. So I think, I'm on the other side of the issue and was at the committee, but I think that is the proper thing. Call it all for a vote. If it's, if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then the amendments can be made. I think that's, that's absolutely correct.
I'm prepared to support that. You're welcome to challenge the chair, anyone who disagrees with that. But having said it, Counselor Van Hooft, that would still give you an opportunity to speak to the issue. You still have three minutes, 45.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So what I'll, what I'll hope then is that, I'm going to, I'm going to vote this down and I hope others do so. And then that will give us an opportunity simply to receive these and then staff can take that as, as the, the feedback, which was the thing that they considered most important. So I don't want these, as was suggested in the, the sentence just prior to the, the principles, that, that these are going to be, these key principles are going to form the base, basis of the development of policies in the secondary plan. I, I don't, I don't want these to be policies. And if that's the only way they can be removed, then I suggest that we vote, vote this down. I don't think they're necessary. I'll continue talking and saying there's other things here that don't necessarily make for an awesome development, which is what I want to have. I don't think it's necessary that we have podiums that are all the same height. The City Hall doesn't have a podium that's, that's the same height as some of these other plans. I could imagine a situation where we had another building like the City Hall that was, that was similar and it would still, still be a wonderful development. Where we talk about opportunities for intensification, I hope those are, are great because the more people we can bring downtown into this development, the more lively this community and this business section will be. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to make some great developments. And I see some of these things working against development. When I ask which of these, which of these principles encourage development, I was, the answer from staff was, there was only one. So I, I think we need to look at these again in, and what I would like from staff is a, a plan that gives us the best and highest use for this. And if there's other concerns about neighborhoods, then we can address those afterwards and kind of work our way down rather than already start with a plan that's, that's not going to give us a great, a great development and not allow developers to use their imaginations and creativity to give us some, some great ideas, which we, which we did see at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments or questions? Counselor Squire?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I will also be voting against accepting all of the principles at this point in time. I, I think many of the, the, the debate that we heard from the public was very interesting because from my point of view, their interpretation of what these principles should be and would be were less principles and more rules. And that's what they were talking about. And, and several members of the public, and I'm not faulting anyone, really were getting to the aspect of exactly what it's going to look like. And some of them were saying, well, we'd like to see more in the principles about what the west and the east side of the park would be. Some other people were saying, well, we'd like to see, see less, and these are primarily people who are interested in the development of the area. We want to see less so that we go into a process that's more open and, and it has more going on in the process. My concern is that some of these principles, I think, move beyond just saying, well, here's the general principles to really a sort of a roadmap of what it's going to look like. And I point particularly at principle number six, which seems to set out an idea or a concept that the greatest heights are going to be on the, on the west side of the park, lower heights on the, on the east side of the park. We're going to concentrate on shadow impacts on Victoria Park and we're going to have a heritage consultant ensure that the heights are compatible with what we see in heritage. So here's my concern. On the west side of the park, I mean, that, that property is largely owned by the Diocese of London and another church. And so I don't even know what their plans are in the future to development. In fact, I have a meeting with the Diocese of London where I'm going to sit down with them. I'm going to say, what are your plans for the west side of the park? And is this principle at all realistic in terms of your plans? Like are you, the, the St. Peter's Cathedral is the seat of the diocese in the area. And the idea from my point of view that there's going to be some really high level development on that land, I want to know if that's even realistic. The, that building's been there for a long, long time. And the idea that there's going to be development on that land is something I want to know before these principles come into effect. Similarly, there's a Baptist church right across the street. They've been there a long time also. I don't know if they, I mean, you'd have to tear down the Baptist church and build a high building. So I want to know how realistic some of these things are and that's going to involve discussion in the community. More discussion about what's the realistic place to have intensification. And there's no use saying, well, we're going to intensify where no one will ever intensify. And when you look at this report, it says, well, you know, one, one of the most important things is those green lawns of St. Peter's Cathedral. And they are beautiful and they provide a sideline in the park. So I'm thinking to myself, okay, so now you say you don't want intensification, you want high level intensification on that side of the park, but you don't want to do anything with the green lawns. Okay, I'm, I'm having difficulty understanding. And that's why I think it goes beyond general principles and moves into a roadmap for how we're going to develop this. Now, the other thing I just want to mention, so I, I would rather see a process where we're moving ahead, having the meetings and we're coming back with the best plan we can have based on what we hear in the community as this process goes on. And nowhere in this report do I see those, those answers given. The other thing that's becoming really popular here is people say, well, you can't be against something and vote against it unless you have an alternative. You got to present an alternative or you're not, you can't. It's like it's become a rule here. And so I just want to reject that and tell you, I don't agree with that. And if I don't like something and I don't want it to be replaced with something I also don't like, I get to vote against it. And I don't have to present an alternative. It's like saying, well, if you're going to vote on a councillor pay raise, you can't just say you don't like the raise, you got to present an alternative. No, my alternative is to do nothing. So if I'm pressed, I just want everybody to be really clear that I would be happy to take out 4.6 at this point in time. I want this to be an open process moving forward without this definitive roadmap that I think is there.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Turner?
Thank you, your worship. I think Counselor Squire's comments, most at the end there, directed my way. I appreciate that. I do say that often. I do say if, if you're going to vote something down, tell us why and tell us what the alternative is. There is a do nothing option in many cases. And say, okay, we don't want to do that. In this circumstance, we ask staff to go forward and prepare a secondary plan for the Victoria Park area. And in fact, actually, that came out of a development application that was going to be rejected because it completely flouted all the rules for development in that area. So we said, all right, let's take a look and say, what, where can we develop? What are the development things? Are there conflicts with the current development rules in our zoning and in our official plan? And how do we harmonize all of those things? Staff went, did a lot of consultations, spent a ton of time talking with the community, with the development industry to try and figure out what's the path forward. The principles here are those. In order to, and let's be clear what this is right now. This is a set of recommendations to move forward to develop the secondary plan. We don't have a draft secondary plan forward yet. But without the principles, there's nothing to coalesce around to be able to develop a secondary plan. So if we don't have those principles, then we can stop the whole process, which is fine. But then we're left with the existing development rules. So there's, there's no change. The, the Heritage Conservation District of West Woodfield applies. The downtown northern limits apply. The transportation corridor applies. And we don't have anything that ties them all together and we haven't contemplated what happens on the north side of Central Ave. So that's what they're trying to address here and that's what the 10 principles are. And I think they're quite reasonable. When we heard the community talk, we had a very consistent chorus from industry saying, accept but don't endorse, or receive but don't endorse these principles. But we didn't hear what was wrong with these principles. And that's the concern. You can't just say. You can't just say, I don't like them. Tell us what's wrong with them. Tell us how to amend them. Tell us how to move forward. I think that's the important part. We didn't hear any of that. What we did hear was there were some general concerns about over-intensification around the park area. We heard some general concerns about not being able to intensify the park area. What we talk about here in 4.6 is identifying opportunities for intensification so that those competing interests can be reconciled in some manner. Without that, I'm not sure how we move forward with a secondary plan that helps us to address development in this area. The Heritage Conservation District for West Woodfield was developed in very robust consultation with the community and identified places to grow and places to preserve, and what appropriate scaling and stepping was. I think that's what we need to land in with this, is continuation of that conversation, but it needs to be based on something. So I really encourage you to support what's being put forward and recommended by the committee, as recommended by staff, because a lot of time's gone into this, and it's the most important part to being able to move forward to the next step. Without that, I really don't think we have anything, and I think we suspend the process and just work on the rules that we have right now.
Thank you. Any other final comments or questions before I turn it back to Counselor Hopkins? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I really appreciate the opportunity to follow both Counselor Squire and Counselor Turner, because they've made some excellent points on both sides of the argument. I will tell you, like Counselor Squire, I have some concerns about some of these principles. I actually see some of these principles working in conflict with one another. I appreciate what Counselor Turner said about helping strike a balance between them. To me, I will just say to colleagues, the balance for me tonight would be to receive these, but not to endorse them. The word endorse carries a certain amount of cachet to it, and we heard from Counselor Squire, I think, quite correctly, that it starts to give the impression that these are a set of rules that we've endorsed, and they're not. And, well, I appreciate Counselor Turner's point, too. If we just receive, that doesn't create a clear path forward. I will be honest, I haven't had time to give this good thought about where I would be comfortable with. So to me, receive is the balance point, that I'm willing to receive them. I don't think that a lengthy debate tonight on all principles in this document is going to land us in a good spot. I don't think that anyone would think that that's the way we should go forward tonight. So I'm not going to support endorsing them, but I certainly would support receiving them, because I think that some good work has gone into them. But I think further discussion is needed at the appropriate level before we endorse something. And I think we need to, again, to echo Counselor Squire, we need to be clear to the community that these are not a set of hard and fast rules, because I heard a lot of people in the gallery, I was watching the live stream that night, I popped into the gallery for a moment, but I heard a lot of people indicating that these, to them, were going to be how we were going to move forward, that we were setting things in concrete. And that's not, I think, what we're intending to do, so I'm not comfortable endorsing at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you. And a question through you, Your Worship, to staff, just.
Can I apologize? I made a mistake. It was, I had you as having spoken, and then I thought that was for something before, but you have spoken, so I'm going to ask you.
I believe I can still ask a question.
Well.
Okay, well, ask a point of clarification, then.
No, actually, I'm going to ask you to sit for a moment, if you don't mind, Counselor. We'll come back through, and if it's appropriate, we'll ask for a point of clarification. Any other comments or from colleagues? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I supported the draft principles, and I supported them because this is just a starting point. The draft secondary plan will come back to the planning committee and back to council. And if people do not agree with anything in the draft secondary plan, that is when you can say no. This gives staff a place to start. So right now, we have four different zones, four different zoning bylaws that each front onto the park, at least four, and some of them provide some sort of competition with each other. And speaking of St. Peter's Basilica, for example, what zoning bylaw applies there right now, something could, an application could come in, they could purchase the land from the diocese, they could build currently what the zoning bylaw allows on that parcel of land. So the zoning by, or the secondary plan gives more specificity in a specific area. So if you have an entire area that's zoned a certain way, anything could, an zoning, or an application could come forward to build something there as long as it meets that zoning bylaw. The secondary plan gives an added layer. So if we would prefer to see a green space on the property right next to the basilica, the secondary plan could have that in there, and we could have that going forward. So notwithstanding what the zoning bylaw would allow, the secondary plan supersedes the zoning bylaw, and it could say, we want a green space here, despite what the zoning bylaw would normally allow in this spot. This is why a secondary plan is good. It allows for more holistic development, rather than piecemeal development as zoning applications come in. This is not tying us to anything. As Counselor Turner pointed out, under the current zoning bylaw, the application that came forward for quite a tall building facing the park would have been flat-out rejected based on the staff recommendation. We chose at that time to refer it back, and staff and the applicant, I believe, continue to have discussions about what that development will actually eventually look like. But based on current zoning bylaws, that application was going to be rejected. Secondary plan allows us to make decisions on what we want to see the development around the park look like. It allows us to actually make this the jewel in the crown of London. So I will continue to support this draft, these principles that will allow staff to then come back to us with a draft secondary plan that we can then, at that time, decide whether we like everything that's in the draft plan.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I know that Counselor Van Holst, you have a specific question.
I do, and through you to our staff. If we were to receive these, are they still able to prepare a draft secondary plan? Or do these principles need to be endorsed in order for them to carry on any kind of work?
We'll refer that to staff. That would be, yes, please.
Through you, Worship. So if the choice was not to endorse, my apologies. So if the choice was to go against the staff recommendation and create a new recommendation to receive, with that, we would appreciate some direction on what could be changed. Otherwise, we will just continue to work through the process and come forward with a draft plan in the future that would include principles and policies. It'll be more fulsome.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? I believe you have a wrap. Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will do my best to do the wrap. First of all, I want to remind colleagues that we are talking about a draft secondary plan. And if you read the report, you will find out that this is the beginning of the process. We're looking at giving staff some guidance in, are they on the right track? Do they have it? These are principles, they're not policies, they are not rules. They are just giving some, we are giving staff some indication if they're on the right track. At the public participation meeting, we heard many, many comments about the principles. I don't think everyone is in full agreement with all the principles, but there's some guidance in some direction that staff are looking for, and this is how we can do this moving forward. The public participation meeting that was held was the first opportunity for the public to come and speak about the secondary plan. This is one step in the process. We know staff will be coming back with plans, and there'll be another public participation meeting in June, and that will be a draft secondary plan, and then moving forward with the final plan later on this year. Again, this is just the beginning and just the process. I think it's really important, if you are not supporting this recommendation, that you be asking yourself, what do you think should happen? And if that's the case, working with staff to come up with other principles and other guidance, that's still available to you if it is important. But for now, staff are looking to us to give some kind of idea if we're on the right track. What I did find out at the public participation meeting is how important Victoria Park is to all of London. It is a jewel in our city. It is important how we plan and how we develop this area. This is the beginning of that conversation, so I hope you will endorse the principles moving forward.
So noted, colleagues, I will turn your attention to the screen as we vote, and you will note that the motion, if you got your communication to the, on the screens, that the draft principles be endorsed, and there are a variety of things there, so I just want to be clear what it is that you're being asked to vote on. Attention to the screen, please.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 8 to 7.
Counselor Hopkins.
And I, that's my report.
Thank you very much. We now turn to the second report of the Audit Committee. May I call in Deputy Mayor Helmer to present the report, please?
Thank you. I'm not aware of any items that anyone would like to pull separately. I will say, so I'll put them all on the floor. I will say we had a progress report on a number of items that were underway by the internal audit team. They flagged a couple of areas where we had some medium-term observations that were lagging a little bit behind in implementation, but they said they're very comfortable with management's approach to getting that back on track, and there's no issues to be worried about. And we dealt with the internal audit plan for 2019 to 2021. And so you'll see it laid out by service area, and what kind of things will be audited by the internal audit team over the course of the next 2019, 2020, and 2021.
Thank you. Are there any items that colleagues wish to deal with separately? See none of their comments or questions with respect to the report? See none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Helmer. Under 0.9 of your agenda, 9.1, the 10th Report of Council Enclosed Session. Counselor Lehman, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to present the 10th Report of the Council Enclosed Session. Council has approved offer to purchase industrial land by Southwest Sun Property Corp., Lot 28, Plan 33M-251, at 585 Sovereign Road, Trelfallger Industrial Park, Phase 3. Subject to A, the purchaser be allowed within 90 days from acceptance of the offer to examine title at purchaser's own expense. B, the purchaser be allowed within 90 days from acceptance of offer to carry out soil tests as might reasonably be required. Subject to C, the purchaser be allowed within 90 days from acceptance of the offer to conduct environmental inspections and investigation of the property satisfactory to the purchaser. D, the purchaser be allowed within 90 days from acceptance of the offer to carry out geotechnical investigations of the property satisfactory to the purchaser. E, the purchaser be allowed within 90 days to determine the financial feasibility of the purchaser's intended use of property satisfactory to the purchaser. And finally, F, the purchaser acknowledges and accepts the property in an as-is condition.
Thank you, sir. You're moving that. Counselor Lehman. I am. Is there a second here? Counselor Pelosi, thank you. Any comments or questions? Then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. I am not aware of any deferred matters nor inquiries, of which I have been made aware, nor emergent motions. See none of the same. Colleagues, under bylaws, bills numbers 170 through 181 inclusive. I'll be looking for a mover and seconder for the introduction and first reading of bills 170 through 181. Counselor Van Mirberg, and seconded by Counselor, I believe, it was Hillier. Thank you. I call the vote. Thank you. Now I'll look for a mover and seconder for second reading of bills 170 through 181. Counselor Lewis, seconded by Deputy Mayor Helmer. See none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Now I will look for a mover and seconder for third reading and enactment of bills 170 through 181. Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Lehman. We call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, before I call for adjournment, two things if I can. From time to time, we have some questions with respect to draft wordings of amendments that might be considered for consideration by council. I'm going to strongly suggest that if you have some thoughts in advance with respect to any amendments you might wish to make to any of the items in which we're dealing, see the clerk insofar as getting some help. They're extremely supportive when it comes to providing the appropriate wording, and while they don't have as many opinions as my Cape Breton mother, they are very good at providing good direction, and I would suggest to you it could be useful and helpful in this process. And I will be encouraging colleagues to do that as we go forward, because there will be amendment considerations from time to time. And I think it is critical, as we've shown tonight, that we know precisely what it is that we're dealing with, and I'll take responsibility for that insofar as not bringing clarity to the wording prior to the discussion. Secondly, I'd like to also acknowledge staff. It's been a very busy little while of late, and I have to tell you, in terms of the items that we're dealing with, the budget, and with all of the committee work and support you provide, this has been exceptionally helpful. And you've heard from throughout our council and committee meetings, the appreciation we have for the work that you do, and I just want to say on behalf of council that we appreciate your efforts, and that means a lot. So with that, I'll look for a mover and a seconder to adjourn the meeting. Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Oh, let's turn your attention to the screen just because we can. That's it? She just turned it off. Let's have a hand vote then. All those in favor. Anyone not want to leave? We're adjourned. Thank you very much, all. [laughing].